Recording in progress.
Could we rise for the pledge, please, this morning? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. We have minutes of our meeting held on March 20th at 10 o'clock here. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
No, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You don't have the minutes?
No.
You didn't receive them email-wise?
They did not. Typically, the board has not gotten them in the past, so a new way of doing things from now on, calling will send them to us.
Okay, all right. So they're, well, they haven't seen them, so what do they do, abstain? Maybe I'd like to.
But they did attend.
Yeah, I'll quickly look at and sign it. I just want to quickly look at it.
Oh, okay, all right. Is it, I'll sign it and then we'll pass it? Okay, all right. Did I say all in favor?
Uh, yeah, you did.
I did?
Yeah, you did.
Do you want to do roll call for the minutes?
Oh, do you want, oh, that's right, we have to do roll call, oh, that's right. Roll call. Well, Travis, why don't we hold off before we do that so that Travis can look at them and then if he wants to, obviously, oh, roll call. Before we start our regular business, we are going to try to chan, we're, we're going to try to change the way we're, we're, I'm going to try to change the way we're conducting meetings because obviously, we have two new members. A lot of the things that come up, we're pretty familiar with because a lot of it is, is stuff that we've already dealt, kind of a continuation of other things. So what we're going to try to do, and I told Alicia to try to keep me on track because now it's a new learning curve. Obviously, when we go to an item, we're going to, we as a board are going to discuss that item, okay? Then we will open that item for any public comment, all right? Then once we, we, once we kind of feel the public comment ha, is done, then we will close the public comment, bring it back to the board for any further questions or discussion, okay? That way, it will give Travis and Sharon a chance to kind of digest it all and then if there's any further questions, it will come back to the board and then hopefully move on for a motion to approve, all right? So each item will be open for public, then it will be closed for public and brought back to the board, okay? That way, it gives, I'll say, the newbies, so to speak, right, a chance to, we'll discuss before, it will go for public, then it will come back for a final discussion, okay? And again, Alicia's gonna try to keep me on track, all right, and we'll, we'll go to that, all right? Do you feel comfortable with that?
Oh, it's perfect, thank you.
All right, okay, all right, okay. So I'll ask for roll call, Travis, on this motion for the minutes.
Yes.
Sunny, uh, you're John.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Oh, you've got it, okay, go, oh, that's right, that's right.
Okay, roll call one for the minutes. John White.
Yes.
Sunny Patton.
Yes.
Travis O'Hare.
Yes.
Sharon Candy.
I'm gonna, not yet, because I haven't read them.
Rizman.
Yes. Okay, new business. We have the sale of state-owned land in Belmont.
Yes, in your packet, we have a letter from the state of New Hampshire informing us that they are going to be selling a piece of parcel, which I included the pictures of where it is located. It's right next to the storage facility on Route 3. I have talked to Craig about it and Karen, it's really of no use to us. It's, it's on a state road. It's where the state turns around right now to do their plowing. If we were interested in it for any reason, it looks like the state would be looking for a $49,400. I don't, I mean, it's up to you guys. I don't think the parcel that would be of interest or of value to you as a whole has it. Looks like the, um, looks like they're going to offer it up to the.
Storage, yeah, storage, yeah.
And they'll probably mash it into one and probably expand their business. That's what I would assume that they're going to do.
Any comment, any questions?
So did the storage outfit confront the state on this piece of property? Did they, did they always start it, or?
If you read the letter, it looks like, um.
They've already offered it to Winescom, from the letter, they've offered it to the Winescom Storage LLC.
Yeah, they just have to legally offer it to us first.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it looks like once it goes to them, that that state won't have that turnaround anymore. And no access will be there, so they will still have a maintenance turnaround. And only the port and outside of the web and any maintenance term will be released, which equals zero point seven five plus or minus.
Does anyone have any?
I don't, I don't think we really have any. The town would have any use for that piece of property, do you?
Big enough to do anything.
I'd say I'd rather get on the tax map anyways. I'd rather get back on the tax map.
Well, I was just gonna say, if, if, if they want it, let them have it and at least we'll collect taxes from it.
Right, exactly, that's what I said too.
That's more than what we're getting now and it's not big enough to do anything. Right, right, right.
Let them put on the tax rule and expand their business.
I'd make the motion that we.
Well, first, is, does anyone, we'll open it for public comment, yes.
Should we consider that, to buy that to the town and use that as parking for the trail? There's no parking on that end of the trail.
And then how are we going to get people from one side of Route 3 to the other side?
You put a flashing light across, crosswalk.
But I mean, um, there is no parking there for people that use the trail. You're actually using Agway to park a lot.
There is a few parking outside the gate, not many, but there's a few outside the gate, that is, for the trail.
You're parking, as you pull in Agway, you're parking to the left-hand side.
Do some people use this spot right now to park in the summer?
Yep.
Would that be more of a question to run out to Ron's group overseas? I don't know the name of that trail. Is that the Brat?
Oh, the, the Winnie Trail, you mean?
Is it the Brat, is it the Brat or the?
Oh, the Brat Trail, oh, no, the Brat Trail, you're right. I get, they're all the same. It all kind of runs together.
The, uh, I'll make a comment, though.
Yeah.
The safest parking is at the beach, right, at the trailhead where it starts up. In that area where there's designated parking, it's off the roadway. Trying, trying to get the state to put a flashing light acrosswalk, I mean.
Is going to be almost impossible. If, if, if we were to do that, we'd have, probably end up having to buy it, more than likely, and be responsible for it.
Get across the road in front of traffic, especially during warmer months, is going to be nearly impossible. That, that will just get tremendously busy.
Any other comment from the public?
I'll just say one other. When they extend that trail, they're going to have to cross Route 3, anyone? Down by the tracks. Down by the tracks. Yep, you're going to bring them down and cross them down in the traffic area. And there's a flashing light down there. No, so.
And actually, maybe, maybe when they do that, they'll be, be able to create parking. Probably more, I mean, I know what it's like coming out of Agway, um, in the summertime and if you think you're going to go left to hit Union, it's almost impossible to end up going down Route 3 because it's just brutal. Yeah.
If it wasn't, if it wasn't for the roadway there, along the tracks that's, that's inhabited and all my housing, the trail would have come along the railroad tracks. The reason it comes out by Agways is because they won't allow the trail to come through there, so.
Oh, those condos, you mean, or whatever that is?
Right, so the, the extension of that would mean they'd come out on Route 3, they'd come down through the breakdown lane to the railroad tracks in that area, cross over and then.
Then continue on.
Continue on.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
I just have a quick clarification for, from Alicia. On the highlight, it shows it's outside the turnabout. But you said the state wouldn't have access to turnabout after that?
Are you talking about the yellow?
Yeah.
So the yellow is the, is the storage unit that they own and in black is.
What, what we?
What is, what does that look like?
Okay.
Travis, I think that, uh, turnaround you're talking about, I think that's within the state right of way. So I don't think they'd be able to build out to that turnaround anyway. They may still maintain that.
Okay.
That's just a guess, I'm not sure, but I think it's in the right way.
That's what I figured, all right.
Um, John, I don't know if I gave you the opportunity to finish a motion.
Oh, well, I'd make a motion that we, so to say, we're not interested in purchasing the land.
Second.
All right. All in favor and we'll ask for a roll call, Alicia?
Roll call to Sharon Candy.
Yes.
Travis O'Hare.
Yes.
Sunny Patton.
Yes.
John White.
Yes.
Rizman.
Yes. Okay, our second item is a Tru-Narc, Tru-Narc training. And this has to do with the opioid funding reimbursement request.
Yes, Mark had sent his, got, oh, a couple of years ago, we had authorized Mark to purchase the Tru-Narc laser using the opioid abatement funds.
Yeah.
And with that came training that was needed for, um, for the staff to learn how to use that. So Mark is coming forward with a request of reimbursement of the, of the straight time and the overtime.
For that, for the training of that, of.
And the opioid funding reimbursement.
I did confer with, um, the attorney general and I also did print out all of the list of opioid rem, remedy.
Reimbursement?
Remedy uses and I provided a copy of this very extensive packet to Mike, Mark and Donna. Because they are the, really the three department heads that would only, are really be able to tap into these funds. They said because it falls under expand training for first responders, um, hold on, sorry, there's so many. It's training. It's in there and it's for either, you have to tie in what you're doing to abate the opioid pandemic and.
And because, because they approved, um, the laser thing itself, they're approving the training for, to use the laser, all right?
So we can reimburse them the training.
So we can pull that out of that mon, those monies and put it back into, okay, all right. I guess we kind of, does any, is there any public con, any, any discussion here in regards to that? Yes.
I just want to clarify, we, we do get reimbursed for the overtime, if it's an overtime rate?
Um, we can use those opioid funds that we have set up and we keep receiving from the, this.
Settlement.
Legal settlement and it is one of the allowable uses to get reimbursed for.
Okay, thank you.
And more than likely, depending on, I assume there's only certain times that they did the training and obviously, if it's a police officer that is already put in his time, he's getting paid overtime for it, so, all right. Um, is there any public comment? Hearing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Would someone like to make the motion?
I do have a second motion for you.
You do have.
Yeah. I'll make that motion. What's so funny?
Nothing, we're just, no, go ahead, go, all right.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure of $2,238.60 from the opioid abatement funds to the reimbursement of the regular and overtime rates expanded for the Tru-Narc training related to the abatement of opioids and drugs.
Second.
Um, we have a second. Alicia, would you like a roll call, please?
Roll call number three, Sunny Patton.
Yes.
Sharon Candy.
Yes.
John White.
Yes.
Travis O'Hare.
Yes.
Yes. Um, the next item is a footbridge fencing quote over pipe. Um, I think, John, was that you that had asked about that?
Yes.
Can you explain that to us?
Yes, uh, we had some foot traffic in the past years out here, over the corner of the banking, down by the river. So, in the interest of public safety, we, this fall, put up that orange fence that's there. We're thinking that for a short amount of money, which Patrick was nice enough to go out and put an estimate together, we can put a split cedar rail fence there and leave it there permanently. That won't say that they didn't, won't climb over it, but like anything else, if they want to go to that trouble.
Yeah, we, we recommend that we maybe put a rubber mat and put some gravel and wood chips over the top of that so it doesn't show. It has, over the winter, developed rust holes, so it's not going to collapse, but it is now got holes in the pipe that are showing, uh, from the weather. So, uh, we can, we can put a mat down, put the gravel down, put wood chips and put the fence in front of it. That will stop the traffic from going. It's about $375 for fencing. We would do the work in buildings and grounds and PPW.
Okay. And it looks a lot better than that orange.
Orange fence, all right.
So you're talking split rail fence?
A split rail fence, yes.
Well, that'll kind of fit the area anyway. It'll look pretty good, I would think, from what we've got now.
You don't like orange?
No, I don't care for orange. It's good for snow fence, but that's about it.
Really? Um, yes.
Thank you. Uh, what's, what's that pipe before? Is it an active pipe or is it just a pipe?
No, it was a feed pipe. When the mill was active, it was from the dam. It brought the water into turn, the turbines, uh, uh, to keep the power of the plant, uh, active. It was disconnected. We have no idea where that pipe ends or how big, actually, how big it is and where it goes from that direction either. So, I mean, it's not like we, we thought about digging it up, but I think we're going to disturb a lot of stuff we don't want to disturb.
So someday, when it finally all rots away or whatever, we'll know exactly where it goes, where it came from and where it went. You're exactly right.
If you start digging down there, you're going to have the environmentalists after us because that's part of the original Indian burial grounds, this whole backyard is.
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't, we don't need bones.
We don't want to go there.
We don't need bones. All right. Does anybody from the republic have any comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Can I have a motion for that?
I opened a can of worms. I'll make a motion that we have Patrick Golden, an employee of the town, at the cost of $375, put up a fence to block off the hole in the pipe, so no one would step into the hole.
I'll second that.
All right. Um, roll call, Alicia?
Roll call for Travis O'Hare.
Yes.
John White.
Yes.
Sharon Candy.
Yes.
Sunny Patton.
Yes.
Rizman.
Yes. The, um, next item is the 2022 audit reminder.
Yes, I just want to remind the board, if they didn't know, that we are doing our 2022 audit this week. The auditors have, um, let us know that they should be here about three days. Cynthia's office is going to be short-staffed this week due to training, so we've asked the auditors to hit their office first so that they're not overwhelmed by requests. We have uploaded as much documents to the portal as possible. Uh, we worked with Mike in the library and any other department heads who may need to submit information to us. So it's kind of a, a busy week for us at town hall and just getting all the information to finish audit.
Awesome, okay. Um, node generator engineering quote.
Yeah, so after our last meeting, I, we left two guys all motion to move forward with the, um, getting a, a quote for the generator. GPS in turn sent me back a quote of $6,000, uh, $6,200 to have their engineer from H.L. Turner do the sizing. I thought, whoa, that's kind of expensive, just to have them size it. So I.
I don't understand this at all. I, I appreciate everybody's got to make some money, but I don't remember having to do an engineering study to put it. Did we reuse your generator or is that a new generator in your building?
That was a new generator.
That was a new generator and they did engineer that for the building based on the outage and the usage of the elevator and, and what we had in there.
So it was built into the original.
That was bad. All right, I don't, I didn't remember it being like.
That was a brand new.
Separate entity.
The one we, the one we had wouldn't have power at the bathroom.
Okay.
So I, I'm not an engineer and I'm not, you know, on this, but I figured maybe we could have someone else do a quote, but I didn't cost an engineer to do it.
Well, I have, my question I have also was, where we haven't done a heating and air conditioning study, should this generator be the size to run those, or at least the heating, because if you lost power in the winter, you got to heat the building. You may not have the air conditioner off that generator in the summer for a long period of time, so you might have to suffer some heat or, really be quite frankly, to close the town down if you lost it for a day or two. But it seems, though, that with the generator people that are in this state selling these things, we, they would come in and look at it, measure the building up. Uh, my, my, again, my question on that is, we haven't really gone into the heating aspect of this to get how much.
But I think the other issue is if we lose electricity here, the main thing is the elevator so that people can get out of the building and keep furnace running. I mean, granted, we are going to have computers, but let's face it, if, if we lose electricity here, probably it's a bad storm or whatever and we close a building down as long as we keep the essential, and I would think some elect, go, Patrick.
We have two companies coming in this week to give us quotes at no charge. We have, uh, New Wave Electrical, Otter Gilbert, and we also have Goof Electric, which is the electrician company that we always use in town. Both of them are coming in, one's coming in, one's, they will, they're, they do a tour to give us pricing. Both of them say the same thing. The generator will be based on the panels that we have in the mill to run everything. That's how the formula works. And, uh, we're not going to increase our, our, our panels, but we have more than enough power here. So they'll base that and as we do the tour, we'll tell them about the additional furnace. We'll tell them about the additional air so they can build that into, into the thing. So we should have, they're coming this week. I would hope to call one week or maybe before the next board, so like, we, we would have numbers we also look at.
It always seems as if, and this is only, you know, like, they're always oversized.
Right.
I mean.
Right.
Even a home gen.
It's built for the worst, it's built for the worst case scenario.
Right, okay, you know.
We attach them with building it to be an EOC, so we would never lose, you know, uh, the ability to run business and it would always be open, um, but.
I'd rather see the $6200 go to the, the new generator or, or whatever than to.
It feels like you're paying $6,000 for a quote.
Yeah, that's what I said. You could tell in my, in my, that I was like, $6,000 for a quote, um, that's a lot. So I had asked Patrick to, to see if we could do something else before we committed to that.
Yeah, it's always nice to try if we have to keep the money local, wouldn't they wave and grow?
Yes, you're exactly right.
But our generator that we put in the building, obviously, it's a three phase. We had to bring three phases, the elevator and. Between that, the circulators, all lighting, everything that we have, that's a Kohler 125. According to Kraft down in Mass who supplied that, that's the largest propane-fired generator that we could have purchased from.
So we already know.
That's like top of the line, so that's an $8,000 addition to our bill. That included the installation.
Yeah.
So, you, you've got kind of a ballpark there where you're looking, that is the largest.
And, and again, not being a, I would think, and that's running your elevator, that's a two-story building filled with, filled with radios and whatever.
Right, this generator will run our building probably another half, I think, with the, with the power up, with the.
Okay, all right. And, and again, I think, um, I guess, if something doesn't run, the most important thing to me, when I'm thinking about this, the heating, the elevator, is the most important, really.
And then it starts.
And then it starts, phew, yep, all right. So, I guess, we're just going to sit back, do, is that kind of, and, and get.
More or less table it until.
Table it and, and let's table it until we get a couple quotes and see what Patrick comes back to us with as far as how they feel about it, all right? Okay, all right. Um, do we have any other new business?
I, yes, I have an announcement to make. Um, on Thursday, our chief of police has given his.
Not chief of fire.
Chief of fire.
Damn, I'm going to turn into Casper like you. Go on, go on, baby.
It's a piece of chalief.
Our fire chief has given his intent to retire. So we are going to be moving forward with putting an advertisement out and looking to build the hard position.
All right, well, Mike, he's got the white beard, he's one. Well, we wish you the best, I guess. Retirement, we're all busier during retirement than we are were before, so. Do what?
True fact.
True fact, true fact, so, awesome, all right. Well, we wish you the best.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, very much so. All right. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was it for.
No, is it, okay. The Fuller Street tree removal, this has got to be the most, uh. I'm going to tell you, this has just been one tree.
I just took pictures in case.
In case you forgot.
I just wanted to see the colored picture.
I want to surround it with the orange fence.
I don't think that holds up, though.
Thanks.
She's only pulled up, is that a light for?
Yeah, I want mine, sorry.
Yeah, that's a accident waiting.
Put a letter she wrote. He wrote, somebody wrote.
I lost it. It's in here somewhere. There we go. Okay, so let's talk about the tree. What do we want to talk about? What is our, let me, here's a couple of things that came to mind. If it fell and broke the pole, obviously, we would have an insurance claim. And I believe our deduction is $1,000, so no matter what, it's going to cost the town $1,000 if this thing falls. Um, and that doesn't count, it's going to fall on the fence, it could fall on the fence too, right?
Yeah, it will.
No, you don't take that fence with it.
It will, all right.
Or, or person.
All right, or a person. Obviously, if it's a person, we might as well just all go home. If it's a fence, it's going to be.
Another thousand.
I was going to say another thousand. So there's 2,000, okay? How much is it, go ahead.
And yours.
Okay, how much is it going to cost us to take this thing down?
What we have from 12 Timbers is 2,400.
Okay.
And that doesn't include fixing the light that's broken, right?
It does not.
No.
Okay, so it's already broken.
We, we have one of the units that is just free hanging there.
Okay.
We'd have to get it, the tree service coming through the tree, but then we'd have to get somehow, get somebody in there with a lift to go up and secure that light and make sure it's secure.
So that would, does Goof, is Goof probably has a buck, a, um.
They have a lift, but I think we'd have to go through the Fuller Street side into the, their driveway to go up there to, to reach.
Oh, the, the people that, 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 that.
Because there's no gate, uh, we took, we took the gate to give, get a, uh, a way to get into the, uh, uh, tennis, uh, basketball court.
Yeah.
Either that or we remove some of the fence and put it back up, buy your tanks, let them come in there. We could do that.
Okay, all right. What would, what, what would the board like to do about the tree? We know it's probably going to be, it's probably going to be over $3,000. But we know if it, obviously, I guess, we could put an insurance claim in on the broken light, but it's not, it's a $1,000 deductible, it's, it's.
I took the liberty of speaking to Danielle and see what we could do. Uh, we've come up with a plan that we think we can get it out of our budget, the $2,400. We have $1,500 budgeted for the tennis court wall replacement. I looked at that, took a look at it all. I can hold that wall together for another year. That's $1,500 if we could apply towards the tree removal. We have, I believe, $3,200 for maintenance for the parks. We could take the rest of that and we just have to watch our spending. So financing the tree removal, I believe we can do that out of the parks and wreck by delaying some repairs and taking some of the maintenance time, if we want to do that.
I just hate to, I just hate to, well, okay, my first thought is I hate to see us start delaying stuff that needs to be done out of parking wreck. Can't we take this out of, Sunny's not going to like this. Can't we take this, can't we take this, can't we take a little bit out of capital? Can we do that for something like this? Or, I mean, I'm only asking, I mean, it's not a building, it's a.
If we have to repair the fence and the light, yes. And I know Craig's not going to like this either, but Craig has a little budget too for tree removal if needed, so we maybe look, take here from take here from take there.
I just, I mean, I don't mind taking a little bit out of parking wreck, but I think it's important that we keep those fences up and those repairs up. And I think last year, we had the issue with the twirly thing, often the. And I think last year we had the issue with the twirly thing, after the-
Right, it seems to be vandalism and something like repaired or fixed.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So I guess my other question is, if we're gonna take this tree down, we're only taking down maybe to the top of the fence? We shouldn't have to take, whose tree is this? Does anybody?
Well.
Tough for debate still.
This is a huge debate and the, and you'll see from the letter from the owner, she, you know, and, and I've had Craig Bryan look at it today, I don't know if Patrick has looked at it, Mark has probably looked at it as well, our network, and, I mean, it is very on the line. Um, it is, she says it's not hers, they say it's not hers, they have this huge debate back and forth for years.
In an normal situation like this, we're usually pooted anyway, so let's just fix the thing.
Without finding the pin, yeah, you're kinda in a pit hole.
We, we're gonna spend more money.
Craig and Brian tried to look for the, not Craig, yeah, Craig and Brian tried to look for pin today, this morning, they did not find it.
What's that? Your man that you have that comes around, that works for your yearly, that takes trees out, is he the one that gave the price on this?
No, I, I called, the company that we normally use, Urban Tree, they're out of Rogers.
Yeah.
They give me a daily, you know, a daily price for the truck, um, two guys, the chipper, and it's, it's never been beatable by anybody. But if they're gonna get a crane involved and come up here with a crane, it's about forty-five hundred bucks.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm just gonna come here and do that.
You answered the question.
So you only got a quote from, you only got a quote from one person?
No, no, this is the people he uses on a yearly basis around the roads.
I understand that, but I mean, that's the only quote we got was twenty-four hundred dollars, right?
Yeah, I was asked to get another quote, I got another quote, okay. We call six, seven.
But we usually, we usually try to get three, three quotes.
That's fine. I've got them scheduled for Friday, so whatever you guys wanna do.
I just.
I just figured twenty-four hundred dollars, Sonny, I don't think you're gonna beat that price. He's a local contractor, he lives in town. I mean, I don't know many other tree companies that we have that do that or anything.
So we use-
Is that Tall Timbers?
Yes.
I'll give you an example of the person Tall Timbers, he gave the two maples that we have on Main Street are need to be addressed. I'm working with in conservation. Tall Timbers came in and gave me a price of six hundred and fifty dollars. Bottom Tree Service came in and gave me twenty-two hundred for the same thing. So, Tall Timbers.
The non-brainer.
So I can tell you that the cemetery trustees have used, um, Tall Timbers, it's Jacob Caldwell is the owner. He is a resident and a taxpayer, and he really goes out of his way to make sure that the work that he does for the town is as inexpensive as possible, and he does phenomenal work. He took down a, a tree, um, on Churchill that was leaning towards the church. You couldn't even tell he cut the tree down. And there's not a speck of sawdust anywhere. I mean, he does phenomenal work, so.
Well, and it's, that's just my input. It, oh, I'm sorry, I'm-
Just, just a question for Craig real quick. So do we not know if he's gonna have to bring the crane in or not until he gets here?
Oh, no, he, he needs to bring crane in, he's in the PD parking lot, so if they, if we're, what I'd like to do is if I, I'm gonna give the answer today, I'm gonna call him. Cause he's, he's got, this is on his schedule, so if it's gonna get off his schedule, we need to let him know something's wrong. So we'll leave the cars moved from PD parking lot, and he's gonna actually have to lift that all the way from the PD parking lot, so. I mean, I, I know what cranes cost and I know what that job costs to do, but I didn't think, I didn't think, after getting a price of forty-five hundred dollars from my, my guys that give me normally a great price, half the money I thought was a really good deal, so. Do you think he would allow Goof Electric to go up in his bucket to fix the light? I have no idea. I mean, I'm not that guy.
Get two birds, one's sake.
I, I don't think it's a bucket, I think it's a crane, crane.
Yeah, they, they, they kind of hook on.
I think what he's gonna do is, I think he's gonna lift that tree from the person's, from the stump, from the bottom of the tree. I think they're gonna lift that tree up, and that's how it's gonna be taken. Okay, but I'm not an expert, so, you know, that's my guess.
Get it done.
Alright, we'll, uh, one more?
I just have one comment. I think that if you're gonna move forward with this, that the property owner signed a release of liability. I mean, I think that document should float somewhere, just so it leaves the town with any liabilities.
Even though she doesn't claim it's hers, but, but if a piece falls on-
Have both of them sign it, both properties.
Yeah, yeah.
More of a reason.
Yeah, yeah. I think you're right.
As long as we get that done, we won't get the crane here.
Oh, I think she, she'd sign it in the hobby, just if she, she wasn't paid for it.
I, I think you're right, but we gotta have somebody draft the letter up, and then.
If you want me to.
And then, can we ask Mark to take, go out and see these people? Or someone like him to go out from the town?
To see who, the.
The owners of both these properties.
I believe the owner of the yellow house is a rental, right? They don't live here, they live in Mass.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have to, I can, I have to email or, do you have an email contact for that owner?
Uh, either email or.
Okay, so we, for that owner, we have to send the release, and yes, you know, one of the town, boy, you could see from the, have her sign the release.
And this would include no lien on the properties?
Right, right, yeah.
I think ultimately you're deciding to take the vote.
Cause you're gonna spend more money in lawyer fees to sign up, to get, it's, yeah, okay.
That's why I make sure.
Um, we'll close-
The tree company has insurance too.
Of course they do.
So, I mean, if something happens liability-wise, the tree company is gonna be covered, so.
Yeah, alright, alright.
So I'd just like to give him as much notice as possible, because he wanted to do it Friday.
Yeah, we'll close public. Does someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we take the tree down on Fox Street.
For whatever.
Whatever reason, cause it's land on our property.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, for a call, Alicia.
Sonny Patton.
Yes.
Tom Pike.
Yes.
Tom Soper.
Yes.
Sharon Campbell.
Yes.
Ruth Murray.
Yes.
Five zero motion passes.
And I think as we talked about not to take the funds from Park and Rec.
I, I would, you can, I would suggest that you use that as your last resort.
Yes, I totally agree, because again, if, if we need to keep the park in good order, because otherwise, somebody will get hurt, like the tree.
Just wanna make the board aware that we did lose an evergreen on the other end of the park, uh, the top, top.
Oh, bust it off.
We beat snap off, uh, the tree that, the left, the tree that's left standing is safe, but it looks ugly for this fence. And we've got kind of a plan to take that, eventually take that down.
Yeah.
If you get a complaint from a resident that, hey, the top of the tree, but we are aware of it, we've already pulled the debris away, uh, and we're planning on taking the rest of the tree down.
Can I ask Patrick a quick question?
Yeah.
Could you go through what you have planned and see if anything could come from capital, from the capital line? For like improvements that you, so you could possibly use some money to offset this from parks?
We're not gonna use park money.
Oh, no, okay.
No, no, we're gonna, no, 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 we're gonna try, no, I don't wanna use, well, I don't, you know, I think it's important that the park has that money to repair the fence, not wait another year. So, we're gonna, we're gonna, um, take it from somewhere else.
Okay.
I'm meeting with Goof Electric on Thursday, I'll get him scheduled first part of next week to come in with his lift to repair the building so we can try to stay on our target of April fifteenth for our opening.
For opening the park, awesome.
I was saying, I should be knocked off by then, cause it's just a little bit hanging around.
There seems to be a lot hanging around.
Every, every day is coming, um, at two thirty, three o'clock, or maybe ten, fifteen people off, applying the fences and going over.
Are you? I know, and that's more dangerous than not, yeah, okay. Um, other old business?
Uh, I have a couple items, but I see Cynthia, do you have anything to do in color or not color?
Yeah, I, I just in case, cause I noticed, well, yeah, I was just here in case.
Okay, she's here, okay, just in case.
Really, no. I was more here about this paperwork, I mean, it was mine.
Did you, or did I?
You didn't get it?
I did.
You didn't?
A while ago. Is that the file? No, is that the deed?
It's the deed.
Okay, so already?
It's already, but I wanted to explain that I only have the three still left and that both been on it to sign.
Can they sign, the other two sign after, like, just, or do you have to?
Well, they did vote on it, so that's why I only put the three, so most of them.
So then you can sign those two.
Three's still a quorum anyway, so that's fine.
Yeah, so it just is.
Well, we can do that. Alright, so Cynthia has the tax collector's deed for the, is for Lejerline, right?
Yes.
For Lejerline, you saw me at the last meeting, voted to move forward with taking a, the tax collector's deed, so she's prepared the deed now with your signatures on the actual deed, we can register it at the registry.
We didn't do that at the last meeting.
Yeah, it was early in the meeting.
Yeah, it was the meeting, it wasn't the last meeting, it was the meeting before.
It was before.
Because last meeting they were here.
Oh, yeah.
It was two meetings, the-
Yeah, two meetings.
Yeah, two meetings.
And the only suggestion I'm gonna make on that is that maybe, uh, moving forward, cause I believe this stuff will have to be re-legalized, but I think that's gonna have to involve several people, and it's gonna have to, that process. And we'll have to do an eviction.
Yes, so once this gets registered, then the registered deed will go to Laura Arleal, and she will be, start the eviction process, and then.
Then we'll set eviction, right. And then we're gonna have to deal with whatever's left when the eviction, when the-
I wonder, uh.
That is, that's it, he knows what else.
Mike and Mark, how, if we presume or we think that there was drugs that were made there, what are the next steps to identify that truly is what happened?
Eviction is case, place.
And then how do we proceed with the cleanup and abatement of that?
Thank you, every company will be, that's disclosure for them, and they'll, they'll decide what they can and can't do.
So we'd have to hire an outside company to determine if indeed that-
Right, maybe let's write it as best as possible.
I think who have we?
It could be very costly if they did, that'll be there.
What, agent on welcome?
If they did work, it's gonna be a costly.
What happened, what happens if we just tear it down?
On welcome?
You can't, that's, that's what I said, you'll be, you're looking to try saving, you, it's, you're gonna clean it.
No, it's not.
You're tearing it down, just tear it down.
Just tear it down, okay.
Okay.
I wanna tear it down.
Tear it down.
Just tear it down.
I haven't seen it, I don't know, Cynthia, I don't know if anyone's seen it or been in it, if it's stable or if it's not, but I haven't seen it.
On the outside, it's gone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The outside's jumped, the inside's not.
Probably worse, alright, okay.
What's the address again?
For Welcome, uh, for Lejerline.
Has there been any manufacturing there at all? It's all on the wall, it's in everything.
So this, we're, we're permitted to just let it down?
We did one two years ago. Get our money back.
That was it, someone was not there.
That's it, alright, alright, well that was easy. Um, do we have any other old business?
Yes, I was thinking the other day, I think it was maybe John, a while back, had asked, or maybe even Sharon somewhere, had asked about town property. And I had asked, I remembered that back in twenty-twenty, we had tried to sell some property we had that were of no use to us. Um, we were able to sell out of those four parcels, two, we sold the one on Rogers Road, and we sold, um, a parcel on South Road. The other two that did not get sell, sold, which I'll go with the, um, what parcel is this? The, the parcel off Route one forty, which on this top sheet is that little triangle there, it's a landlocked property.
Yeah, the top.
I suggest we do exactly what we did last time and, and offer it, you know, send the letters to the abutters, which the abutters is on the back of your page there. Um, see if they're interested, cause there's actually, there's no access to the road, and it would only be of interest to any of those abutters, uh, if and they want, um.
I think I have that.
If you would like me to move forward with that one, I can. And then the other one that, surprisingly, we didn't sell the last time was the Dearborn Street property. That was the property, that was three properties that we had our, um.
We tore down.
We tore down some of the buildings, we took in everything, right?
We're gonna tear them down. Yeah, everything.
On that property, and then merged it so that it was one parcel instead of the three. So if you would like, I can also, um, move forward with that. I wanted to ask you guys, on this one, so the minimum bid, because of what was due for taxes, what was due for, um, legal, Craig's cleanup, was fifty-nine thousand, six seventy-five.
That was on Dearborn Street, yeah, yeah.
That was on Fuller Street. We weren't successful then, we may be more successful now, but we also went through a sealed bid process. We only have, I think we put it in the newspaper on our website, so it wasn't widely, widely advertised. You could go to a auction of a, a company that you, you know, that do municipalities, and they'll do that auction. Um, that is the other option, or you could also hire a Realtor to sell it.
So if you went to auction though, the starting bid would be?
Would be the fifty-nine, if you wanted to. And then you also have an option at the end, well, maybe you got forty or forty-five or fifty.
Right, yeah. To make the determination.
To waive.
Determination of time, well, we'll get rid of it, at least we'll get back most of it and get it back on the tax roll.
Any questions?
Nah, I'm fine with us selling off the town land, I just, yeah, the cost is gonna be the issue for the Dearborn one, I think.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah, it's not even a full acre though, I don't know if you could get sixty thousand for.
It does have water sewer, right? It does have water sewer, that's a plus, but I think it's sitting on top of a big rock, though it looks like it's pretty legit.
Not the faucet, at least. I think it's doable this time in the market, but.
The other parcel, the landlocked parcel, we, um, had advertised it as a minimum bid of twenty-three ninety-six, sorry, twenty, twenty-three hundred dollars and ninety-six.
That's what we have in it?
That's what, yeah, that wasn't the minimum bid, and I believe it was probably just with that taxes at that point.
On the property on Dearborn Street, there were like three companies interested in it, interested in it. It was just the bid was way higher than they felt, way wedges and everything to make it valuable, but it was definitely a problem.
That's what I figured.
Cause that had a lot of demo, does that property come with, it's not open to public yet.
So.
I'm waiting for public.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, we'll open it to the public, go ahead Kevin.
I thought, I thought it was, excuse me.
That's alright, listen, we're all guys.
When that property had demo down on it and stuff, does that, so when this goes out to bid or whatever you're gonna do, does that come with a clean bill of health now? As far as, does the property, the crane?
No, it's a quick, it's a quick lane lead, because it was a tax collector's deed, and we'll just quick.
So, yeah, we didn't have it tested or, we just.
So basically, I buy it.
What you get, what you see is what you get, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Has the town ever had an appraisal on it? Like, what is it really worth? We had about all the extra costs associated to it.
Mostly ledge, so.
I almost, I al, and I almost think-
If I was a Realtor coming out, I mean, I'd have to get a cost analysis on what they bought, I mean, you know, it's pretty simple. And then at least you have some idea, you look at that, you look at the costs that are.
When the appraisals did their, when your-
So the current appraisal is forty-seven six.
Which is.
I'll be what it's worth.
It probably is, so, okay, so, and, and what was, we, it was, we have fifty-nine in it, so to speak?
Fifty-nine six, yeah.
Fifty-nine six. So, is it?
Yeah, the biggest question is how would you like to offer a bid? Do the, the sealed bid, which doesn't get that much exposure, do an auction or a Realtor?
I think an auction would probably be the best way to get the most people involved in the bidding on it.
I think it's seventeen percent.
Is that what it is?
There's, there's ones that there's zero, zero, zero fees to the town. Okay.
So they do it for nothing?
They do it for nothing, all the fees go to the buyer, not the seller.
I know, like, James, you can, you can, I've seen, they do, they do miss auctions all the time, last time I did, seven.
I find that hard to believe.
Me too.
Yep, and those go to the buyer.
Oh, the buyer pays the auction fees.
The buyer pays any auction fees.
Got it.
There are some that two will do, and, and if we choose to go to, sorry, if we choose to go the auction, I will, I will research all the auction companies out there, and we can, you know, bring them in, you guys can ask questions and how that process would go.
Yeah, I think for the Dearborn, the auction would be the best process for us.
I would agree with you.
Mm-hmm. Does anyone else have any other comments? We're, we're back here talking about it. Okay, close to the public. Okay, now it's back to us, okay. You're thinking auction, you guys are thinking auction, and is that, that we're talking just to Dearborn Street, correct?
And, and speaking to the auction though, I think if you gave them a description of the land, they're gonna, they're gonna give you a price that they think it's worth.
Oh, yeah.
Because they, they're gonna wanna sell it, so they're, they're not, and I think that, I think, I think you're looking at a thirty-five thousand dollar piece of land.
And then we can determine.
I think that'd be all of it, maybe not, maybe even that's the one. There's not, as Kevin knows well, there's not a little ledge there, there's a lot.
Yeah, I'm sorry, somebody.
I think those houses were pretty much built on top of the ledge, that were there.
They would know, not a lot of land available, and what there is is very expensive.
Yeah.
And right now, we're just losing tax money available.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
With water and sewer.
Yeah. Yeah, let's shoot, let's, I think it's this consensus to shoot for the auction and, um, see what we can find out.
So I know two auction companies in the Hamptons that you were gonna- So I know two auction companies in the hands of the Dearborn municipalities, would you let me to speak with them individually, get their feedback, and if so, have them come in for them to do this? You can choose, A, which auction company would you like to go with?
I think that you can choose which, well, that's my two cents, I mean, an auction company's an auction company, yes.
Well, that's what they get to say.
I do know that there's some that will do, like, the soup to nuts, they'll do the whole advertising, the bidding, and then they'll also do the deed after. Um, and then there's some that will only do the auction itself, and then you have to hire your legal to do the deed, so.
Your legal. Soup to nuts, let's do the soup to nut once, because, uh, then it's.
Am I correct in saying that they charge the buyer fee? So the buyer, the buyer pay, they, we may not pay the seventeen percent.
But they may, right.
The buyer's paying, so, yeah.
Somebody's.
So that may be, that may be off the top of what we could get for the land.
Also remember, great.
That, that's subjective.
Yeah, take into consideration.
You have to take that into, into consideration.
And anything too, I have to, anything above and beyond what we need to get, technically goes back to any.
Ears.
Ears, any previous owners, it will go and.
Right, we can't keep, we can't keep anything.
Make it access, if you don't get access.
I don't foresee a change over sixty thousand of the land, so.
I don't, I don't need that, but, you know. But, it's just. Yeah, okay.
But I will get all the information and bring it back to you for your consideration.
Alright, good, alright.
Yeah.
Uh, and would it, that's with Dearborn, what did you wanna do, do you wanna?
I'd send letters to the abutters and see if they, at this point, if they just want it. And, we're wasting your time, the planning board's time, or any way to hold this piece of property, just see what, if any of your abutters want it, I'd just give it to them.
Did anyone put in sealed bids last time for that, any of their abutters?
I don't believe we got anything on it as that parcel.
Landlocked, it's just.
Yeah.
And I don't even believe we got any bids on, I can look on the Dearborn Street either.
I thought we did get a couple bids, but they were lower than what we could even, they were low ones, didn't we Cynthia?
Yeah.
I thought we received a couple, yeah, I think we did get two or three, but they were much lower, so.
How big is that? Sorry.
Have they even ended up with that little piece of triangle?
That was probably leftover from subdivision.
Probably on a state layer survey.
Dearborn Street is eight point eight two?
Probably this guy, I think he owned it.
Yeah, on Dearborn Street.
Yeah.
It was probably just a.
Point eight two, that's about three quarters of an acre.
I'm like such a weird little piece.
You mean the Pike one, the one, yeah, it, it doesn't matter, it's, it's landlocked.
Yeah, one that was. I mean, it could be the one who was more interested in it, just to, he was aware of their property.
Yeah, yeah. Like John just said, it was probably a surveyor's mistake, more than anything else. Okay, um, any other old business?
Um, can I please, um, might have an update on the Christmas storm?
So you remember, this storm, uh, we did the, uh, the, the state had requested us to do for damages, we sent our first number out, which was forty thousand four hundred. Cause they asked for, for four days, for us to get that, we got it to them, we did it, we'd fringe on it, and we sent the second one out, was fifty-one thousand five hundred. Um, and then, after not, this last few weeks, they have come forward now, and they're starting to move forward with this, it's gonna move pretty rapidly. We also now added in the fifty-eight thousand seven sixty-nine for the, uh, the school's generator.
I have some, well, I was.
So the, uh, right now, when it's looking, we're approximately a hundred and nine thousand, we'll be looking to, for the state to give back to us, which. We will be the administrator of the money to the school for the generator, and the rest of that money will go back to the town and to the general fund, which will be the fifty-one thousand five, and that's some change in there, so, but that's what we're gonna do.
Good job.
Good, yeah, that's.
And you're, they have a final, but.
They have, well, right now, they're doing their, we're, we're doing all the applicational processes, but they're going pretty fast, as soon as we do the app, finish the app up, which will probably be this week, we'll send Alicia just to approve it, make sure we did it, you know, well, correctly. And then we'll send it out to the state, the state's moving, like I said, they're, they're pretty quick on this, the money's already been, uh, allotted from the federal government, so it's a matter of us putting it all forward.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah.
The generator for the school?
Yeah.
Is that gonna be propane, or is it that same diesel?
Yeah, I can tell you what it is, it's a hundred KW LP, which is propane, three-phase forty volt generator.
Okay, yeah. Okay, because obviously the diesel was an issue on top of everything.
Yeah, no, this one will be LP, so.
They should love us from this, I mean, you know, awesome, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Awesome, good, hopefully.
And my last bit of information to update you guys on, so, I wanted to update you guys on our, um, PDIP account, where we had moved some money to that account, and we've been really, um, lucky and fortunate with the interest. Um, we had put the money in February, and in February, we had twelve thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars of interest, and in March, we had eighteen thousand six hundred and fifty-two, for a total of thirty-one thousand four hundred and forty-three. The interest was in February, I believe, at four point six percent, and now it's at four point eight three percent.
Gonna pay for the generator with interest, with, with any lot, awesome, good. Alright, no other old business?
Uh, the last bit of old business that I did not get a chance to get it to the agenda was a update on Walker's property, um, via Mark, I figured I'd have Mark come through and kind of update.
Awesome.
The newbies on where we stand in the history on this property, um, as Mark has had a meeting with Mr. Walker, and he has that outcome of that meeting.
Alright.
So I, I did do, uh, ride around with both Sharon and Travis on, on Thursday, and Walker was one of the, the topics of, of conversation.
So they've seen it.
Yeah.
We all see it every day, almost.
So on March twentieth, I was finally able to get Mr. Walker in, uh, to sit down and, and have a con, uh, conversation with him. It didn't last very long, and he said, nope, you're not taking my cars, uh, which I then tried to explain that the town isn't taking, you know, it isn't trying to take possession of your stuff, where it's, it's a property cleanup, I mean, any cars that were removed would be, you know, with offset, offset other stuff. And he, he said, nope, he was, I guess it's time for me to go hire an attorney, and he got up and walked out. Um, on the twenty-first, um, I, I let, um, Mitchell Group know, uh, what Mr. Walker's, uh, decision was, and I have not heard from Mitchell Group, uh, since then.
Twenty-first, they're responsive, okay. Um, so what's the next, we're waiting for the attorney?
So, yes, I mean, based on what, um, uh, what Alicia had, had presented as far as options, whether it was voluntary from Walker, or whether it was imposed, uh, by, by the town. Um, it appears that, that we're heading, we're heading for court action on, on imposing it from the town.
If you guys, so just, uh, can we take the next out?
It's too valuable a piece of property, to let it sit there, and it's in violation of what every ordinance we have, went from the planning of, of keeping your property, I mean.
Well, and the, I think the other even bigger issue is, he has no license to do anything, well, he has no license to.
Operate a junkyard, or, or repair.
Operate, operate a junkyard, or, or whatever, and, um, you know, I think, and again, the three of us have been pretty proactive, trying to get some things.
We, we, we've been hanging for years.
And, and, and again, we added, um, we added money to his budget, because for this type of situation, unfortunately, and, um, I guess. I mean, if we wanna take a vote, my vote is, we've gotta keep moving forward at this, we can't just stop in the middle of what we've, you know, a, and again, he's, he has no license.
Just a question, a question for Mark, you, you think legal is the best way for us right now, too?
I, I mean, I, I've, I've exhausted, basically, efforts from, from my end, uh, information that I get from Mr. Walker is constantly. In, in conflict with what he tells me, you know, a week ago, you know, or, or a month ago, um.
And we've had Mr. Walker in front of us, what?
Four, four times, and Mrs. Walker once.
And each time, he promises, gives us a date, and.
Oh, it's looked the same the entire time, I've driven up on the road, so.
Yeah, it hasn't changed, yeah, yeah.
Right, uh, and he, he was very clear when, when he finally did come into, into the town, that he, he has absolutely no desire, uh, to voluntarily, you know, do, do with the town, with, with the understanding of the, um, of a lien. Lean wasn't even his concern, his concern was.
You're not taking my car.
His, his stuff being in the property.
You know, I guess, I guess worst case scenario, we could call D E S.
So I have been in contact with, with the state about, yeah, oh, oh, illegal junkyard.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. Alright.
And unfortunately, many of the issues that exist that would, what we would feel would fall on the plate of a D E S, they're, they're kicking back to the town to be able to handle it.
They don't want.
They are, they are willing to support, uh, cause D E S has been out to fifteen Johnson, when there've been some, you know, some oil issues and stuff there. So they, they are in a position to support, but they are not, or at least they express to us, are not in a position to take the lien.
Right, 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 because they want us to, um, deal with the expenses, not that, okay.
So how is this in conjunction with the one oh six property, I mean, are you processing that the same as you are with that one, or, or how are we working out with that, because that's just as bad?
Yeah, so the seven fifty-two, uh, La, Laconia Road, I believe they received a, um, a, a letter from Mitchell Group in December, twelve twenty-one, I, I believe it was. And I asked for an update on that in, uh, in January, and that's when, uh, we were told, um, for the fifteen Johnson Street, to basically take, take it off the plate, we're waiting for, you know, for attorneys to bid, to communicate with attorneys. And that they were going to figure out the actual ownership, you know, of that.
That's Johnson Street, but what about the one else?
Right, so, but, so in, in that request, um, I did not, um, there was no reference at all to seven fifty-two, uh, Laconia Road, uh, so I had no, I, I've had no, no update, and no communication from Mitchell Group on that.
And that's the one that falls between the boatyard and the house that sits far back, okay.
And that's one with the, it's, he's got multiple RVs, um.
I guess, I guess, do we, hmm, this is public, maybe we have a lawyer fee, uh, uh, maybe we have a lawyer problem here. Um, you know, they not doing with this, I mean, we're asking them, and they're not responding, is that? I mean, this is in December, what month is this, this is April, and we haven't even heard back from them, um.
Well, and when I ask them to the lawyers, the, I guess, the letters that are being sent, it, it tells the owner to contact Mark, not the lawyers.
Okay.
So the lawyers are just sending the letters on our behalf, where the communication to go back to Mark, not the lawyers, so, they're sending them on our behalf, supposedly, I don't see the letters.
But have you seen the letters that they've sent to them?
So the seven fifty-two, um, there, there was a, a draft uploaded to, uh, to Dropbox, um, whether or not it was actually sent, I don't know, I, I, I can't say it.
I think it's gonna be more of a lawyer issue soon.
Yeah, yeah, to me, it sounds like we have more of a lawyer issue than we have a, uh.
If I remember correctly, I think, um, John, I think you asked either two, three, or four, uh, meetings ago, for, uh, for us to, for someone to reach out to Mitchell Group, um, I, I don't know if we have or not. Um, you know, basically saying, hey, we've been, we've been a long, you know, long, long time customer. But we have, I mean, in sort of different case, uh, with Laura and the one ninety-four, uh, Gilington Road, um, I have seen that there's been some communication between, uh, between lawyers, you know, on, on that one. Uh, but I haven't, I haven't seen anything for the seven, seven fifty-two, the fifteen Johnson, or the, um, for the one, one thirty, uh, people.
Well, we were updated on Johnson Street, so we know we're just holding tight.
Right, yeah.
Right, Johnson, we know.
Take that off the, off the table, yeah.
Like, that one needs to come off, just.
Right, right now, we know, we know what that, that's what ended up on that side.
And, I don't know, it's tricky, there's been quite a bit going back and forth on that property.
Yeah, just, um, I, I was, I was tagged on, on email where there was, uh, they were anticipating then re, reapplying for a special, uh, special exception. Uh, there has been a death in the family, and so I'm, I'm assuming, then you'll pause a little bit with that, and, I mean, appropriate, so, um, but it, it seems like they're going to be coming back to planning board on that.
I think they move forward with some sort of a, like a legal move, but then they say, well, maybe we'll, we'll come get our exceptions and our, and this, but then they put that, 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 so Laura said, you know, take a little bit of time to deal with the death in the family, um.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, alright.
Who's representing the town from the attorney's office, is it Laura?
It's Laura and Joe, the Mitchell Group.
And you've got a lot on your, you've, you've got a lot on your plate? Why don't you call and say, where do we stand when one oh six? Could I get a copy of the letter, did it really get sent to them, was there any response? And how should we follow up then, what's the next move?
And I think the other thing is, is, is just tell them that you're getting pressure from the, your board, because we've gotta make decisions, we've gotta know where we get pressure from. Taxpayers, as to what are we doing with some of this stuff?
Yeah, I'd say I agree with John, having Mark at least have a, talk with the lawyer, I know, it could make sense for Alicia to handle the other departments, but he has a lot to deal with legal issues, so it makes sense to have him deal with that one.
Yes. Yeah, I would just, yeah.
Ask him nicely, where are we going?
Yeah, let's, you know, we're getting impatient, is that a nice way of putting it?
We use, we use winter as an excuse a lot of times.
Oh, winter, no, impatient, I think I like that better, I think, we're getting impatient, impatient. Um, and then obviously, I think it's a consensus to move forward with Walker.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's not much else we can do.
Mark's exhausted all of his options, and yes, we have to go forward.
He's, he's, we've, we've been very patient, we've met with them many times, and, um, I think.
The RV that was there.
Is it gone?
No, no, no.
Oh. Oh, I remember, hi, it's still the other one that he was gonna fix the roof on a few weeks ago, yeah, yeah, it's, and to me, that's kind of, um.
Yeah. Correct.
He showed us he wasn't gonna come back.
Right, yeah, well, I had a different, I was, but that's not appropriate to show, but I think he was.
I agree, if, if, we've tried to work with him long enough, and he's just pushing us down the road, there's no point of trying to continue working.
Right, it's, it's, well, it's been over eighteen months since I've been working with him, um, and so he, the, he lost the, his application renewal, I believe, June of twenty-one. So, so, and then the, the board gave him a year to come to the client, um, still didn't, uh, still didn't do that, um, so now, now we're at, what, well, eighteen, nineteen, or twenty, twenty months, so June will be twenty-four months.
It's not from lack of, um.
No, no, I know.
Alright, that's for sure, it's just, you know, I mean, it's one of many, but we gotta move forward.
It's just good to have a public record.
Yep, that's exactly right, you're right, okay, thank you, Mark, I think, you know what you need to do.
I got a, um, couple of infections to do, and then I will, I'll, uh, Mitchell Group call.
Yes, please, and be persistent, nicely.
Nicely persistent.
Um, any other old business?
Uh, no, I just have non-public.
Okay.
For you.
Okay, we are going to, um, I'm gonna move into, I'm gonna make a motion, do this a little different. Oh, that's right, well, that's further down, um, we're, um, I'm gonna make a motion to enter non-public session, per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, letters A and C. So I will need a second for that, please.
I'll second it.
Um, roll call, um, roll call to enter non-public, do I, but I need a vote on that.
Yes.
That's what you're doing now, that's.
That's what I'm doing, that's what the roll call, okay, well, I was, okay, who's, uh, John?
Yes.
Uh, Sonny?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
And yes, myself. Now we need to stop the livestream recording.
Recording stopped.
So I think, um, I just have two. Six. Okay. I think Karen's going today, so we may be able to record that, but she goes today, until the hip hold up.
Just, I didn't mention this, in the public session? I have a question from a lawyer's office.